Avoided. I've, I've, good evening, council. I'm sorry, I can't be with you this evening. I've been wrestling with COVID since the end of last week. After two years, it's finally caught up with me and. Well, I've been laying a little better. I'm not feeling great. So bear with me, please. Those in the audience, welcome to the. Wednesday, November ninth, regular council meeting. This is the last regular council meeting for this council a week from today. The new council will be sworn in at the inauguration meeting, which I believe is being held in council chambers. I'll call this meeting to order. And read the land acknowledgements, which is the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land. Which is the traditional and traditi territory to the Alishnaabik people. Now known as the Chickewa Tri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation. Rama First Nation and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen. And included within the Williams treaties of nineteen twenty three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the here in Wendat. And the historic homelands of the Maity. And that our town is home to a large and diverse community. Of indigenous peoples. Thank you, and I would just invite you to. Take a moment of silent reflection and to think upon those who are less fortunate than us in the. Various parts of the world that are suffering from climate change significantly. Thank you very much. I would remind folks that this, this meeting is being. Recorded and can be found on the Midland YouTube channel. It can also be found on the local Rogers channel. And it is a hybrid meeting, so there are persons in chamber. And as people not, not in chambers such as myself. Counselor Downer sends his regrets. He's otherwise occupied seating. He can't make it. I'd ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Seeing none. I have a motion moved by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Counselor Cunningham. But the contents of the regular council agenda for November ninth, twenty twenty two be approved. On this or questions with respect to the motion. Seeing none, all in favor. Thank you. That carries. Next, we have a motion moved by Council Oshewski, seconded by Council McGinn. That the items and related recommendations contained within the November ninth, twenty twenty two consent agenda. As consent items having been considered by council. Be adopted. Comments or questions with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. That carries. Next, I have a motion moved by Council Post and seconded by Council Maine, the council resolving with committee of the whole. All those in favor. Thank you. Or do you, Deputy Mayor?
Take your worship. Sorry, I'm going to turn my laptop back. I think I have better read. There we go. Apologize. For the last time, we have been in the committee as a whole. Quite exciting. Been a long twelve years, but we have no public meetings, no integrity commission reports, but we do have. Two petitions and one deputation. The first petition is from the Midland Bay Landing rethink of. A proposed development for Georgian Bay communities petition submitted by Betty and Graham. I believe we're just taking this for information. We'll pass it on to the new council. We'll have some work to do. I see some of the new elected members. Congratulations to all you and good luck to the town of Midland and then good luck to you guys. I hope you guys do a great job. But we will refer this new petition to you, to you with regards to the rethink proposal. Is that all we need to do, Madam Clerk? Wonderful. And next up, we have a petition. From. Sorry, timing of cross mark petition submitted by Kathy Deimers dated October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two. And it's all, it's to do with the time of our crossing and setting. So once again, the new council will have two issues to deal with right away. So we'll pass that on to them. Yes. Council Maine, question or comment? So I guess I could go back. I didn't ask if anyone had any questions or comments with regards to the proposal for a rethink. I presume not, but I'll move on to the next item. Council Maine?
I was just going to say, it was actually kind of unclear about which specific pedestrian crossings. The applicant was referring to. So if staff could follow up with. The petitioner. There are different settings for the different intersections in town. So maybe you're referring to, say, Eighth and Hugo or. You know, maybe the intersections downtown on King Street, which there's a bunch of them. So I think it's a good concern. Just had to figure out exactly which one they're talking about. Thank you.
No problem. I see Mr. Campbell has updated. We're fine. Then I'll go to you or Council McGinn, or you have a quick comment coming? Sure. Council McGinn?
I'm going to. Cautiously. Because when I'm not going to be here next term, suggests that it's also sent to the Midland Accessibility Advisory Committee. So that they can have their input. In regards to the amount of time that is necessary to cross, seeing that by twenty twenty five, Midland needs to be AODA compliant.
Wonderful. Thank you, Council McGinn. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, just for council's interest through Deputy Mayor. Right now, we time all our crosswalks at one meter per second for the pedestrian walking. That's on the low end of what the standard is. And some municipalities are looking at point eight meters per second for a crossing time. So in next year's budget, we can consider but to reprogram all our traffic signals. You know, just on King Street from Young down to Bay Shore, cost about five thousand dollars to retime those. So like, if the next council's interest, we'll have to see. Do they want us to look at all intersections in town or some specific ones? But we, we certainly staff can. Modify those settings, but there is a cost when we have to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. You guys be off and running work already. Next item up, we have. A private member, Phil, a presentation from. Miss Fellows, Miss Fellows, you here this evening? Oh, via Zoom. How are you this evening?
I'm good. Thanks for having me.
Wonderful. I'll remind you, we allow ten minutes for your deputation. And we may have a few questions for you after. So thank you for coming this evening and I'll turn it over to you.
Lovely. Thank you for having me. I'm going to read from something I've written, just so I stay on track and respectful of your time. So, good evening, Mayor Strathern and the rest of council. My name is Amanda Fellows and I'm here representing the Women of Ontario Say No. A collaborative of men, women, people, organizations and groups that care deeply about basic human rights in the workplace. And in this case, protection of the right not to be harassed by an elected member of council. In March of twenty twenty one, Orleans Member of Provincial Parliament Stephen Blaze put forward a bill, the Stopping Harassment and Abuse by Local Leaders Act. That bill was brought forward to introduce legislation that would deter municipal councillors and board members from engaging in harassment by holding them to account for their actions. Including creating a process to remove them from office. The bill requires that codes of conduct for municipal councillors and members of local boards include requirements for those councillors and members. To comply with workplace violence and harassment policies. And creates an integrity commissioner and judicial process to remove them from office for egregious acts of sexual, emotional or psychological misconduct. The bill was reintroduced in October of last year as Bill Ten. In his address to the House, Mr. Blaze conveyed the urgency to prioritize and pass this legislation before the most recent provincial election to ensure that it was in full effect prior to the upcoming municipal elections. The legislation died on the floor when the, when the provincial election was called and has since been reintroduced as Bill Five. In August. It is a nonpartisan and had all party support. If the legislation had passed, it may have affected who was able to run in this most recent election. There are so many good people that serve the people as elected representatives. However, like every sector, there are people who are guilty of perpetuating harassment in the workplace. One does not have to look far to find examples such as in Barry. Ottawa, Mississauga and Brampton that were cited by MPP Blaze as to why this legislation is so necessary. In fact, the number of examples have only increased since the bill was last on the floor. In every other workplace in Ontario, employees are held to violence and harassment in the workplace policies. Currently, there is no legislation that provides an appropriate mechanism for accountability for municipally elected representatives when it comes to perpetuating harassment. In any other job, if egregious acts of harassment is substantiated, that person is fired. In the present, not only can an elected representative perpetuate harassment, no matter how egregious, they can retain their position and seek reelection. That is not acceptable. This bill is simple and it has two primary components. Hold municipally elected officials to violence and harassment policies of the municipality they serve. And create a process by which the integrity commissioner can apply to the courts to vacate a position for substantiated acts of egregious harassment, harassment. All claims need to be substantiated like in any other workplace HR department and only in those instances where harassment was deemed egregious would an application to the courts be made for removal. If removed, the person would not be eligible to pursue subsequent reelection or be appointed to councillor local board. This is the same consequence applied to candidates who fail to file a financial statement for their election campaign. It is hard to stand here or be here virtually. Sorry. It is hard to be here and sorry. Trying to rationalize how a lack of financial disclosure warrants penalty, while councillors guilty of egregious harassment can pursue reelection. Carte blanche, something is wrong with that picture. So today, what we're asking for is your support of your workplace safety as elected leaders of the community. You have the responsibility for ensuring basic human rights are respected and protected. This bill is the foundation. We are asking council to pass a motion to endorse Bill Five and write a letter of support circulated to your local MPP. Premier Doug Ford, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing Steve Clark. The Association for Municipalities of Ontario and the MPP for Orleans Stephen Blaze. I'm happy to report that should council choose to pass this motion, they will be joining the ranks of Barry Springwater with Sega Beach, Ottawa Woodstock. Tiny Aurelia Penetanguishing Clearview Bradford, Adila Toss, New Tecumseh, Collingwood, Romero and Oro Madonte. With deputations planned to every municipality in this province. Every voice matters and we look to you as elected leaders of your communities to do just that, to lead. Please join these municipalities in standing up for, for human rights of every person in this province. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Fellows, and well said. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead. I hope if you'd stick with us, I have a motion coming out of your deputation. And we may have a bit of discussion and a couple of questions for you if that's fine, but I think we're going to see that, of course, we support this and. But I'll go ahead and read the motion moved by Council Maine, seconded by Council Ocheski, that the deputation from Amanda Fellows regarding Bill Five, stopping harassing and abusive. By local leaders act be received and that council of the town of Midland. Here when endorse Bill Five, the stopping harassing and abuse by local leaders act. And direct staff to write a letter of support to Jill Dunlop, MPP for Simcoe North. Premier Doug Ford. Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing Stephen Blais. Liberal MPP New Orleans. County of Simcoe Warden and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. You've heard the motion. Any questions or comments with regards to this or any questions for Miss Fellows? Counselor Maine?
Thank you. I guess I just talked through this and Amanda, Miss Fellows can hear me? Or do I turn my, okay, thank you. Yes. Well, thank you, Miss Fellows. Also, thank you for running in the municipal election. Good effort. Thank you so much for bringing this before us. This is a obviously a pretty important topic. And so it actually requires changes to the municipal act, hence the, through the provincial. Bill Five, which is being proposed as a private member spell. Is there other things that we can do locally without amending the municipal act to say strengthen our code of conduct? Or, you know, other ways that we can help alleviate this issue, prevent it before it becomes an issue or becomes a problem. Thank you.
Miss Fellows? And Madam Clerk, I'll be asking for a recorded vote on this item, please.
That's a great question. So thank you for asking that. I think. I think if, if we, certain municipalities are interested in strengthening things like their code of conduct. There would, our group would definitely be open to exploring that. I also think there's. Accountability for council to review their code of conduct and how that aligns for them and in their, in their area. I think it's certainly a bigger conversation. It's a really big conversation. I think there's lots of things we can be doing, but truthfully, passing this. Deputation and supporting this bill and talking about it are all key components to that too. So thank you so much for that question and. And I'm also happy to follow up with more recommendations if, if you're interested.
Thank you very much. I have a couple more questions. I have Counselor McGinn and then Counselor Gordon. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you very much. That, that very much, that speaks to me. Thank you. I. I think it's incredible and I appreciate and I applaud your efforts. Do you think that having a. Unequality, diversity and inclusion by law included would also. Paralleled with. With what I believe is we're going to pass today would. Would not only help, but it also gives a framework for ways that we can behave and ways that. People know how to help one another and. You know, prevent having to go because prevention is, is far better than actually having to reprimand somebody. Do you think that's something that maybe the two could be considered by the next council together?
A hundred percent. And I think, you know, in my regular nine to five, I work in the social service world and we know there's certainly intersectionality between violence and. You know, racialized folks or, you know, members of two S L G B T Q communities. And so I think wherever we can align E D I with these types of things, that's critical. And so. Yeah, Counselor McGinn, I would agree with that one hundred percent. If there's an, if there could be an effort to do that, I think that would be exceptional.
Thank you.
Counselor Gordon?
Thanks for the deputation and for getting out there and rattling the bushes, getting support for this. To a large degree, it's good to see I've kind of restored my faith that a lot of the electorate. Saw these problems and didn't return some of these disgraces to office. It's not always the case, but you know, there are a couple of the examples you cited are no longer. So. That's one thing. To, to Counselor Maine's comments, I mean, we can strengthen the code of conduct or to Counselor McGinn's. Suggestion that we could add more framework and more regulatory stuff in-house. What that, while I don't discount that. Really, all that's doing is adding more bark. And what we need is more bite. So we can't create punitive structures and policies that will. You know, give more of a punishment to a person than the province allows. So. Right now, the maximum penalty that the integrity commissioner can dole out. Is fixed by the province and they don't have the option of removing someone from office, even if they're a total sleaze bag. And, you know, offend every possible thing that they're, they could do. That can be done only by a justice. So there is a process, but I don't think it's ever been, it's ever happened since the, you know, the creation of this framework. So what you're looking, what you're doing, I think, is, is going in the right direction, which is going right to the source. You know, the teeth of the dog, as it were. And trying to add, you know, file them down and, and make them more attentive. One of the things that I'm, I'm a little saddened that's missing from this. But I suspect that, you know, I know why. Is, you know, there's still no requirement for elected officials in this country, let alone province and, you know, municipality. To pass a background check, a police background check, which is the most basic litmus test for anybody. If you want to volunteer at your kid's school or at the library or the skating rink. You have to at least pass a vulnerable sector or a background police check. And there is nothing like that. For elected officials in this country, which if there were, I think would be a bit of a house cleaning to some degree. And maybe that could be part two of this. If we really, would really want to clean up. Morality and. Maybe bring some more integrity back to the profession. That's having trouble attracting candidates. Pun intended. That is maybe something that could be looked into as well. And is there any plan from either you or what you've heard about? To make a request for something like police background screening for elected officials?
Not that I've heard of, but I appreciate that comment and I'll take that back to the larger group because I think that. To be totally transparent and honest, I didn't realize that. So I think, or I hadn't put that into context. So I think. That's an exceptional point and I'll take that back to the larger group. So thank you for that.
Counselor McGinn? Final word and we'll call the vote.
It's a point of, to, to clarify for Counselor Gordon. That an E D I policy does not allow, does not give more teeth or more bark to anything. What it does is it creates a framework. That. Says that it's a fair future for all and that diversity is welcome. And that inclusivity is something that is championed. And it just, it builds an opportunity for an environment to exist where all people without fear of stigma. Know that they have. The opportunity and the ability to holistically and authentically live their truest self. In that. Comes language. So there would be the ability for people to speak with each other. We here had started, and I saw this happening in Zoom where people were able to say she, her, they, them. That would be the sort of thing that would be included in an E D I policy. Not punitive. It's more about. It's more, it's actually the exact opposite of it. It gives you everything so that you don't have to go that route.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. I see Mayor Strathern, all one more question or comment?
Just a, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe you can't run as an elected official if you have a criminal record. You certainly cannot vote if you have a criminal record. So I think to Counselor Gordon's point, it's already contemplated in the. Quali qualifications to run and or to, and to vote. People look and see, but I don't think if I had a criminal record, I could run. So. We'll leave it at that.
Well, we'll leave that with Miss Fellows to take back to her group and hopefully it is indeed something that you can bring forward at a later date. Any other questions or comments? I see none. We have a recorded vote, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. Mayor Strathern, members of council, you've heard the motion. When I call your name, please answer yes or no. Counselor Post?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor?
Counselor McGinn?
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Counselor Oshewski?
Yes.
Counselor Maine?
Yes.
And Mayor Strathern?
Yes.
The motion is carried unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And thank you so much, Miss Fellows, for coming this evening and good luck to your group.
Thank you to all of you so much for your support. Take care.
All the best. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have. Notice the motion. I presume there's none bringing forward today. They wouldn't go far. Yeah, one. Announcements. I know that there's a spot in the agenda for presentations and. Eighteen point one, I know if anyone had some final words to say as we leave, that was the spot we were going to do it. But if that's fire, if you'd like to do it now, but we definitely have a, if anyone has announcements to, to give at this point, Counselor McGinn?
So I have two. The first one is. Is as your representative on the S S E A Board, which is Severn Sound Environmental Association. I'm proud to announce that the S S E A has recently. Been awarded a federal grant for two years of funding to expand the tree program. More details will follow in a formal announcement from the S S E A and the funder. I'm also thrilled to share, as many of you likely saw on the news, the S S E A has also been awarded a grant from the Great Lakes Local Action Fund. To engage community volunteers in the naturalization and habitat restoration project, projects to improve water quality. Enhance habitat and contribute to climate change mitigation and adaptation. And we all know here that staff have been working really closely with the town of Midland and that staff use S S E A as a resource. So I want to say thank you to. Board members and staff from S S E A and the town of Midland. So this is really awesome news and I know I'll be sharing, sharing it when it comes out. So stay tuned. And I have a second announcement. So when. When the Honorable Lieutenant Governor of Ontario Elizabeth Dowdswell. That's why I had to look it up, make sure pronounced her last name properly, was in town. My daughter and I went. And it was absolutely incredible. She's twelve. And she, we did a little video where she was. Amazed that, you know, the person in that highest position, the closest she would ever get to royalty. You know, recognized that she was the only youth there. And then empowered the youth of our region and said how important they are and their voice. And this is phenomenal because my daughter broke out of her little shell, my shy little daughter who's only sassy at home. So hello, Cece. Is on the student council. And she was fired up. She was really fired up about the environment. So her honor had said that usually it's the youth that speak about the environment and that's not, it, it's true. It's not only the youth, but they do tend to do it. It was, it was beautiful and I wanted to share what she had said, seeing that. I was the only person, well, there was other people there, but I was the only council member there. She shared that municipal councillors. Are so important. That. It's the closest to the people that you can possibly be. And she was championing the position that some of you are going to be in and I see you up there. And the position that you guys are going to be in. It was very emotional. And I wanted to share that with you, that she values. Your elected position. I think that's important to share. So I wish you well. I can see Jamie Lee Ball and Roberta Balls. I can see. Sheldon and I can see. Bill Meredith and I can see Deputy Mayor to come, Jack Cotton. This is what the woman was saying, how important your roles are. So fill these seats well, please. And make us all proud.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Any other announcements this evening, Counselor Maine?
I just want to give a huge shout out to all the houses that had amazing Halloween decorations up this year. It seemed like everyone kept. One-upping each other. The neighbors seem to have a very healthy competition and there was one house in particular on Hugo Street. Just across from GBDS, that was just spectacular. So thank you, everyone, for feeling the spirit of Spooktober. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maine. Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. A couple of quick ones, just a more procedural, just a reminder, everyone that the winter parking kicks in on November fifteenth. Which means no parking on municipal lots or streets from midnight to seven AM. Even if there's no snow removal, you could still be subject to a ticket. And towed if there is some reason to, we need to move your car. So just remember it's kicking in, winter parking notice, it's setting upon us. I'm just looking at the. Looks like potential for snow on Sunday. So. At any rate, my other thing was, we're all wearing poppies and. Just something to remind everybody, November eleventh, again, Senataf. Please, if you have the opportunity, join us. The weather is sixty percent rain, but forty percent sun. And, you know, temperatures are around sixteen, so it. It's not a terrible day and the vets. Which are dwindling in number in our community would really appreciate your support. Of course, there'll be the traditional parade down King Street, so. Do look forward to seeing you at the Senataf. On November eleventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Strathern, then I have Counsel Oshewski.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Gordon hit on the, the Remember Day Ceremony on Friday and the parade down to the Legion. So thank you, Counselor Gordon, for raising that.
Counsel Oshewski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my eighth time in eight years making this announcement. I'm wearing another furry upper lip. Addition to my wardrobe today, so here to bring awareness to men's mental health, grow a mo, save a bro. And. It's an important cause that I support every year and I hope everyone here wearing mustaches are doing it for the same reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Oshewski. Any other announcements? I see none. For the last time, moved by Counsel McGinn, seconded by Counsel Gordon, that the committee whole rise and report. All those in favor? Sorry, I'm smiling, so. All right, your worship, I'll turn it over to you. You're muted, Mike. Your worship? For the last time, you're muted. Your worship, for the last time, you're muted.
You think yes, for the last time. I suspect not, but anyway, after, after this many years, you think I'd know where the new button was. Thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Cunningham, second by Counselor Ochelski. The recommendations of the committee, the whole for the meeting of November ninth, twenty twenty-two be adopted as resolutions of council. Also, you've heard the motion, comments, questions. Seeing none, but if a question, Counselor Ochelski, are you just voting in the affirmative to support the motion? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next, we have a motion moved by Council Maine, second by Council McGinn. Bylaw twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three being a bylaw to appoint a municipal law enforcement officer for the purpose of enforcing parking and snow removal bylaws within the town of Midland be passed and enacted. Comments or questions about the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, that two carries. At this point, I believe we have some presentations and we'll turn the meeting over to recognition of council twenty twenty, twenty eighteen rather to twenty twenty-two. I'll turn the meeting over to CAO Dino, Mr. Dino.
Thank you, worship. I'd like to start before I make a few comments of gratitude to this council, I just want to acknowledge the service of all the veterans. That we will acknowledge on the eleventh and certainly thank them for all the service that they've offered over the years to our country. My purpose of my, my comments are really to thank you, to thank this council for the service that they've done. I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to serve this council with our administration and express our appreciation to all of you for your service to Midland over the past term. For some of you, this is your first experience on council and for some of you with several terms. Serving, serving in this part-time role with full-time expectations. What must be noted as well is that you served during a term that for most of its duration faced one of the most unique and prolonged events based by a council in recent history. With no playbook to guide us through a pandemic, but with your commitment to our community, we continue to effectively and creatively deliver services, keep our staff and community safe while tackling important daily and strategic issues. As you know, municipal government matters to more people, more than any other level of government. It's also the most accessible form of government and people don't distinguish which level owns the problem. They just want help. And this is where they turn to us. Those things that affect businesses and families every day are the issues, requests and policies that you've dealt with over this term. What you do matters a great deal. And your commitment to serve your community by putting your name on a ballot four years ago deserves all of our gratitude. With your help, we are supporting more people than ever before. We have better tools and better data to help inform our recommendations and decisions. We've also successfully made progress with all levels of government, increasing their awareness of Midland's importance and resulting in more grants of support. We've also implemented financial strategies to forecast our needs effectively, monitor and manage our reserves so we can make sure Midland remains sustainable. We continue to be one of the most premier locations on Georgian Bay with our downtown. One of the best, deep, protected in the world. Premier events and welcoming businesses and people. Indeed, Midland has been discovered again and more people than ever before are here to live and play in a town prized for its people and quality of life. It's not surprising. We were recognized as one of the top one hundred places to live in Canada and the entire town deserves congratulations for this. Two members of council interact with the administration on a regular basis because of their roles. We'd like to thank the deputy mayor and the mayor. Our deputy mayor always found a way to interject his energy and enthusiasm into our meetings, even when pushing for fiscal responsibility or the Buffalo Bills. And our mayor as well, I'd like to acknowledge personally for his guidance and support during my tenure in his role and we had many long, sometimes very long passionate discussions. I often reflected on his early advice to me. We want to make sure Midland is a place where our children will stay and thrive. Thank you both for your direct, but always encouraging counsel and feedback to me and our team. Of course, we all know there is much more work to do. Many more challenges to meet and more progress to be made. Some of you will continue in the next term of council and we know all of you will continue to support the residents and businesses with the knowledge of the privilege and importance of serving your community. Thank you as well to your families for the support, which we know is the foundation on which we can contribute. None of this is possible without their sacrifices and encouragement. In closing to this council, thank you for your service, your dedication and commitment to this town and all of North Simcoe. It was an honor for our administration to serve beside you for these four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. I think at this juncture, I'd like to offer an opportunity for each member of council up to five minutes of just reflection on the four years, the past four years and your thoughts. Or any comments you'd like to make. So with that, I'll, I'll start with Counselor Gordon, the mayor elect.
Thank you very much. So I truly have enjoyed my past four years. I mean, I spent probably the four years before that, starting to get engaged in politics. You know, yelling at my TV back at the day, why, why wouldn't somebody ask this question? For love of God, just ask this question. And it was suggested to me that perhaps I stopped taking it on on my television and, you know, put my, my name in the, the ring and ask that question. So I did. And with the support of the residents of Midland, I was given that opportunity for the past four years. Clearly, it hasn't been without its challenges. I've had to learn twice. Anyway, for sure to stay in my lane and to learn what that lane looks like and learn to use every inch of it now. And do that effectively. Clearly, we've had some conflicts, this council with issues around the disbanding of the police service and lingering leftover stuff that's now thankfully behind us. But to council's credit, it didn't impact our ability to set that aside and it was conflict and it was drama. We set it aside and we did the work that would needed to be done for the town of Midland. And we did it collegially. And I think that's a testimony to the folks at this table that, you know, your, your maturity level and your passion towards serving this community was reflected in that ability to set aside personal differences and, you know, other conflicts. And get the work done, roll our sleeves up and work together on the many issues that have been before us the past four years. So from my perspective, you know, without making this about me, this is really about you and how much I respect the work you all did. And I, I hope and expect that this won't be the last that Midland sees and hears from each of you, even if I you weren't sent back to the table as active councillors next term. I do look forward to your council, your input, your passion and all the things that you brought to the table for the, not only the past term, but previous terms. I look forward to, to that. And I think Midland and fellow residents also look forward and welcome that. So from my perspective, even though I'll be remaining on, I want to thank you for what you've done. It's inspired me. It's given me, you know, some direction on and counsel and how I'd like to do things in the future. Carry on some of the wonderful work we've done and learned from some of the things that I wasn't happy with. And I think that's life and we've done a great job working as adults collegially and I want to thank you all for that opportunity. Good luck to all of you.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Oh, I'll look next to Counsel Cunningham, please.
Thank you, your worship. It has been a pleasure serving with you and being mentored by you in this role. As I came on to the leadership role of council, it was brand new, brand new, fresh eyes to go into this position and figure out how to be effective as a councillor and to stay in my lane. And so there were a lot of things I never said at the council table because I said them in your office. And I appreciate you listening to them and also encouraging me to understand how to get some of the results in a better way. And the things that being attached to the outcome were totally inappropriate on. Council is a governance role. It is a leadership role, but it is not a management role. And it is a wonderful personal development opportunity to discover how to work, build consensus, to let go of an attachment to outcomes and change that attachment to being an outcome that we all said what needed to be said. And that we then took the vote. I think you managed and worked with this council, offering your time, offering your listening, offering your willingness to change your opinion. And you were quick and easy to look for more detail, look for more data so that you could change your opinion. And I really much valued that as well. Also willing to bring in staff to help me understand an issue that I was concerned about. I think the only issue that I was darn right about in my first blush at it without going deeper into the facts was when in the budget it said repave Sunnyside half a million or yeah, half a million dollars. And it's like, oh no, that's, that's not supposed to be there. Yes, I was right. First off the block. It's one of the few is this is a position that requires careful contemplation. It requires an understanding of rule of law. I did not come to the position with the breadth of understanding and the the clarity on municipal act, planning act, how to work best with the limited resources we have. It is an eye-opening position. And I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to work with this council and with you as mayor and with the staff who were incredibly patient and supportive in helping me to learn and understand what could be done when we're challenging some of the things behind the scenes, right? We, we had a lot of very frank and challenging discussions and he's like, damn straight we did. Only time I've used that word in the council chambers, but it's the appropriate one. Mr. Dino as well, I, I truly appreciate how you embraced the role coming in as CAO without a municipal background, but with a customer service background. And I think that was a really crucial decision that we made for town of Midland because we've seen the needle move in communication. Obviously not far enough, but the pandemic certainly did high bought our ability to really bring in some of the communication that was, was obviously needed. But you, you worked very hard to do that. And the openness, the bringing in, I mean, there's so many wonderful things that happened in this term that were really needed, that the time was made for. Bringing in the ability to have everybody ask questions around budget. I have to admit, when I first started on council, I thought I'm going to do all of it, but budget's going to suck. And it's, it's just one of those things that through budget is sexy budgets. Budgets where stuff happens, right? It's, it's where the decisions are made of what our priorities are, what we actually care about. And that was a wonderful eye opener, which is a great thing because my new business partner is a CFO. Totally value him in his role though. Whereas I, I might not have been able to communicate on that level. This has been such an education. I wish that I'd had the opportunity to run again. Maybe in eight years. I thank you all for your patience, for your support, for your counsel, for your willingness to change. For your willingness to hear everyone's voice and look for ways to make our vision come to length.
Thank you, Counselor, very much. And thank you for all the hard work and all the committees. You certainly did make a difference in the four years you were here and as I said, we all, I guess, and particularly they took on a lot of different high-profile committees and along with some of your colleagues on those committees have done made, made, moved the needle. Counselor Ochelski, please.
I thank you, your worship. Thank you, Midland, for the best eight years of my life. It's been great. Thank you to the coworkers here. I've enjoyed my time with all of you. Thank you to staff for the last eight years. It's been great. I didn't even cry at my wedding. My wife's watching home, shaking her fist. Congratulations to the new council. I lost to a local legend and I sleep well knowing that, no shame in that. So I'm looking forward to seeing the new council. I'll be here sitting in a plastic chair instead and I'm okay with that. It's good. I've got a young family and I got a lot of stuff added me. So onward and upward, new beginnings and I really appreciate my time here and I really appreciate all the experience that I've grown so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ochelski, for all your hard work and and I know what you mean. We'll be sitting in those plastic chairs watching what's going on with interest. Counselor Post?
I just want to say that I'm very grateful for the last four years. I came in not really knowing what I was getting into. I was happy to learn every step of the way and it certainly was challenging. My favorite part though was dealing with residents. I, I love answering the phone calls and going to your homes and meeting so many wonderful people that I didn't know before. There's, I mean, it's a small town and you think you know everybody, but you really don't. There's a lot of people in this town, a lot of wonderful people. And I'm just very grateful to have the opportunity to be able to serve you again for the next four years. And I hope I can be even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and congratulations on your reelection. Job well done. And thank you for all your help in the past four years as well. Counselor Maine, please.
That was good timing. My computer just turned back on from abruptly restarting in the worst time ever. But thank you so much. The last eight years have been incredibly profoundly changing for me. I think they were just incredible. It's been an incredible opportunity to be involved, to be involved in such a well-run town. The thanks that I have go out to all my fellow councillors on this term, but also to the twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen council. So special thanks go out to our beloved friend, Counsel File, Counsel McDonald, Counsel Canning. And so fortunate, Counselor Downer wasn't able to attend this evening. October twenty-sixth, twenty fourteen, day before the municipal election, I found out my wife was expecting our son. So that was always a good omen and the first term of council also was birth of my son and the birth of my daughter. And it's been a, it was really meaningful to me. It was a really touch of class for staff to bring in the Honorable Justice Robert Maine to swear us in in twenty fourteen at the council chambers that once was the Midland Courthouse. So that was a very meaningful moment for me. It was, that was a really nice touch. It's been amazing to be involved in special events, the Butter Tart Festival, which is always the most fun event and fun committee to be involved with. But we've also done some really great stuff with infrastructure and King Street is probably one of the most amazing projects that we've been involved with. Downtown Master Plan started before the twenty fourteen council and we were able to do it in the pandemic and that was probably one of the biggest achievements of infrastructure and monetary wise. Just want to give a special thanks to all the amazing water department, wastewater. The day after the election, a few weeks ago, there was a main break on Young Street. I don't know if that's a bad omen or not, but the staff were there within minutes to have it fixed and it was paved within a week. Amazing planning and building department, great administration. I love coming into town hall. People are always so friendly. Great fire department, our police department was just top-notch. It was sad to see them go as well with the Midland PUC. Again, just so much hard work done by staff, the operations department. The snow is coming soon and the operators are always so hardworking. You know that you live in a friendly town when you wave at staff and they wave back even if they don't know you. And I always love that. Every time you see somebody driving to town in Midland truck, they're always have a big smile on their face. So with that, you'll catch me around Midland being stylish, big T-shirt, Billie Eilish. Thanks, Midland.
Thank you, Counselor Maine, and thank you for your eight years of service. Particularly like to thank you for the effort you put in on one of the committees that you've been on. You've been a real driving force there. Don't give up on the trees. And don't give up on the act of transportation. I'm sure we'll hear more from you on that. Counselor Post? Oh, sorry, I'm a custom beginning to beg your pardon.
You had to make a comment about trees with John. You, you heard what I said before, right? It's SSE A and their funding?
Yes.
Yeah. You know what? It's, it's been great. It's a, it hasn't, hasn't been easy. So I'm, I know everybody here is saying how fantastic, how wonderful. I'm really grateful, but I'm going to tell you something. It's not easy. It was taxing. It was frustrating at times. Actually, there was times where, you know, I cried. And there was times where I thought, wow, I didn't know that about myself. Or I didn't know that about people. So it forced me to think and be different and change my mindset. And whenever a person has to change their mindset, it's tough. This role, if you have any ego in you, it is going to kick the living snot right out of it. Your ego must be gone. And I thought, I don't have an ego. I was wrong. Because it was challenged. But that is the role of servitude. And I thought I had myself prepared for that and I didn't. I didn't. So thanks to everybody who, there's quite a few select people who, and I'm not going to name you all by name. But some of you were But some of you were very helpful um to me when I had questions like. Um, I never in a million years expected that as a sitting counselor, it would come out in the newspaper. That I'm gender fluid and polyamorous. Never thought. Some of you reached out to me. And I thank you for that. So your privacy is gone and I thought I'd be able to keep some of my privacy. But here's the thing, I'm here right now on for another couple of days and when the newly elected people come in. And we're asking people to share their raw truths. With us. And saying what they want for their future. Considering the seniors and the children. So really, we're asking them to be as open and vulnerable. With us as possible because we're in a position of great influence. And now I'm thinking about Spider-Man. Yes, with great power comes great responsibility. It's going to be challenging and it was challenging. And for that, I'm so incredibly grateful because I'm a different person. I want to thank my peers. And I want to thank you and I want to thank you, the people who are watching. Because there was a point where you trusted and believed in me. And thank you for that. That's very heartwarming. It doesn't go into my ego anywhere. Close to my heart. I wish everybody well. And I'm not going away. One of the things that I realized and it made me giggle and I shared with a couple of you is that um. I had ideas and I had views that I heard and I realized that. When you do a deputation. You get up to ten uninterrupted minutes. And one of the things that I started working on was being a little more concise. When I talk. And not thinking while I'm verbalizing. So watch out. I'm not going anywhere. So thank you to everybody. Um, it's been, it has been a pleasure, but it wasn't always easy. Good things aren't. Easy. And I'm glad that I went through this journey. And I hope to be somebody who is trusted and valued and respected. As a person, as a eventual former counselor. And as a neighbor, a friend. And a relative. I wish you all well. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much, Coster. It's uh, I've I've certainly watched you uh learn and grow throughout the four years and congratulations on that. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. I too may cry, Cody. Um, I have a bet with my buddy Smurda that I wouldn't, but I think I might lose that bet tonight. Um. I thank you for the kind words, uh, Mr. Dino. Uh, there are two things I wholeheartedly believe in. One is capitalism and two is democracy. The people have smoke spoken and I would like to congratulate uh Mayor Elect, Bill Gordon. And the new council, I wish you nothing but success in the next four years. I love Midland and want the best for our community. So please make them proud. Uh. It's truly been an honor representing the people of Midland for the last twelve years. Four years as a board two counselor and the last eight as your deputy mayor. Uh. It's hard to believe that twelve years have passed. But it felt like the perfect time for me to uh take a pause and leave local politics. It's a very unfortunate that COVID hit and stopped everything in its tracks and definitely hindered. Any and all momentum, the last three plus plus years have been the toughest of all our lives. But this council never stopped serving the residents in the most difficult of times. And congratulations for that. New downtown King Street, state art playground equipment. Uh, and some of our new parks, opening of the Chicken Mink Health Hub. Return of the Midland uh Butter Tart Festival, to name just a few. Congratulations. You should be very proud. Now I have a bunch of people I'd like to thank. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my mother and Sandra and my father Ian. For making the decision to move to Midland in nineteen sixty five. The year before I was born. With my two brothers and sisters, best decision they ever made. I want to thank my amazing kids Liam and Annie, my partner and best friend, Noella. My amazing brothers Cam and Ty and my wonderful sister Kathy. To my very large family and friends, thank you for all your support over the twelve years. Could not have done it without you. I'm truly blessed to have you in my life. Thank you to all the people that I had the pleasure of serving with on the on town council. Some wonderful, wonderful people. Thank you to Mayor McKay. Special thank you to Mayor Strathern. Uh, not only were you a great leader, but you've become a great friend. So thank you for that. I also want to thank all the town staff, past and present, C A O Dino. For all your hard work and keeping this machine Midland running. Great job and I appreciate everything. I also have a thank you to the County of Simcoe staff and Mr. C A Awakened, who uh it truly has been a pleasure to serve at the county. I also would like to thank Warden Cornell. Chair Richard Norcross and MP Terry Dowdell for all your mentoring and friendship over my time at the county. And the many others I now call friends. I will miss you all. I also have a very special thank you for my uncle Don Cousins, a true legend in Ontario politics for helping me with my first election. I think of you every day. But the biggest thank you of all is to the people of Midland for having a faith in me. And elected me three times to counsel. Words cannot. Express the honor that is. Now I'm going to get a little political. As my duties come to an end. I still and will always believe the brightest future for North Simcoe is Panetang Machine and Midland uniting as one. But I'll leave that to counselor, I sort of Mayor Lake Gordon. And hopefully we can do that, but I honestly and I I thought it when I first got in here and I think it more and more to this day. Did we get everything right? I know we didn't. Can I promise you every decision made? I believe was for the best interests of all residents. I love Midland. It's never faltered as a born and raised Midlander for fifty six years. One thing I know for sure, Midland by far has the greatest people, period. Midland has been quite a ride. Thank you for the opportunity. Go Bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your twelve years of service. And I know I think I've heard you say this once or twice, Midland is in your blood. And it shows every day in every way. So thank you for your service and uh. Uh, really appreciate your friendship and also your advice on 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 all issues except maybe the library. And we won't go near that one. Thank you very much for that. Um, I'd just like to say a few words and I'm going to read them because otherwise I'm going to trip over my tongue. And I could get a little emotional otherwise, so bear with me, please. Uh, as this council session of council comes to an end. I want to express my sincere thanks to all town staff for the support you provided me. Counsel and especially the residents of Midland. Words can't really express how proud I am of you and what you have achieved throughout this term of council. Your dedication and professionalism. Has shone through in ways that surmounted even the pressures of the pandemic, always finding ways to serve our community. A special thanks to those who supported me in crafting communications, keeping track of events, prepping for meetings, et cetera. Your patience, professionalism and sense of humor are very, very much appreciated. I'd also like to thanks all those who gave their time and expertise to serve on various committees and to make our community a better place to live. A special thanks also to those volunteers that gave of their time, working tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure events ran smoothly. Your dedication and generosity are much appreciated by me and I'm shared by the community. Especially offer my appreciation and gratitude to this council. I've learned from each and every one of you and as a consequence, I think I've grown. Uh, from my association with you. I appreciate that very much. And for that, my thanks. Your passion and commitment to serve, to pitch in and to do the work, to make the hard decisions for the benefit of all residents. Has ensured that Midland has a bright future. It's been an honor to be the mayor and serve on this council with you, building a solid foundation for a bright future. We leave Midland in a promising place in its history and with an even brighter future. I and I wish the incoming council much success. In continuing to build a community where our children and grandchildren can choose to call home, as C A O Deno said. This community is rather specialized than all over the world. Uh, traveling for my business. Every time I come back here to visit family in the past. It just hits me so hard just how special this community is. The residents who. Uh, add the character and the flavor to the community, the physical attributes of the community. The ups and downs of uh molded the the uh sort of steel, the the individuals here to the in near to in near the hardship. And and to pull together when needed to to make this community really, really work. I really want to uh. Uh, but point out that this community is poised. Really poised to take off. This council has made all the hard decisions, I believe, this deputy mayor said. They haven't always been right. We won't mention parking. Well, I guess I just did, but. There's one where we've, we at least we at least pivoted, we we were listening and uh. And uh, I I wish the next council well and how they deal with that. I wish next council well and how they deal with the financial. But from a financial perspective, we're in a good place. We're starting to rebuild our reserves. Uh, we have a lot of growth uh ahead of us. In particular, uh, we've. The things that I set for myself to get done, like, uh, you know, doing the main street, managed to do that. Under budget, on time during a pandemic. I can, what can I say? Kudos to the staff. Kudos to councils for making those tough decisions. Kudos to the businesses who who fought to survive through that time and had the patience forbearance to work with us. Um. We have a community safety and wellbeing plan that's being coordinated with the other communities in North Simcoe. And and facilitated through the County of Simcoe, C A Awakened, and I believe it's in their budget again. To ensure that this program uh starts to bring down the silos and bring everybody to work. Towards a solution for community safety and wellbeing, looking at those factors that uh. Uh, actually at impact at the fundamental level of our community and this wellbeing. I'd also like to uh point out, we're in a great place around housing and thanks to Councilman and his his efforts in that area, some great ideas. Thanks to uh Chair McKay and a two of the Mr. Phelps and Mr. Cowley and uh. To others who worked on that project. We're in a great place. Uh, see there's some significant changes coming down from the province. See all that plays out. I think also, uh, I I really think this council went. A long way through the budget process and through support. To helping to make. Midland Town Hall, a place where people would come in. Spending a third of their life and enjoy what they're doing, enjoy the place they work. When I first sat in the mayor's chair. There was no banter, there was no laughter, there was heads were down, then people walked in the door. Today, people come in, it's good morning, there's a joke, a smile, there's chatter and it's. A nice place to be and everybody acknowledges each other, treats them well. And so thank you to staff and to council for supporting that effort. Middle Bay Landing has been a big issue throughout the election. It's one of the places that this has been a file for ten years. It's something that uh. I think clearly will come up with the next council. It's one of the only things with respect to growth that this council. This town truly has, you pull over, treat it well. There's potential for a hundred million dollars worth of infusion into the local economy. To capital expenditures on that waterfront. Unsurpassed access to that waterfront and I would ask you to be very careful how you treat that in the potential development. Fine. And finally, I'd just like to say to everybody, uh, the residents of the town of Midland. That it's been a truly been an honor to, for the past uh eight years to be of service and to work with. Not only the twenty fourteen, eighteen council, but this council to really move, I think we've moved the art stick significantly. I look forward to the next council doing likewise. I wish them all a success in the world. Um, you're in a great place to move the art states sticks and make Midland. Uh, to quote of somebody that uh I know uh used to say, make Midland's future arrival had a schedule and and uh. I I challenge you to do so. I wish you all the luck in the world in doing so. And I wish you congratulations on on being chosen by the people to lead that charge. So with that, I'll I'll end there and say thank you to all of you. And as Edward Merle used to say, good night and good luck. So thank you, council. I managed to do that without without chatting a tear, which is my wife will tell you is not a. I usually do get emotional, you know, you've seen me get emotional before in council. Um, and also I've been a veteran here. I'd just like to say to my wife, thank you for your support over the eight years. I know it's not been easy. I know I'm not an easy person to live with, especially when I'm upset about something. So thank you for your support. So. Here we are. Um. I think I'm missing a bylaw, but I'm not sure.
Uh, I have it in front of me if you need, your worship.
Thank you.
Uh, moved by Council Gordon, second by Council Cunningham, that bylaw two thousand twenty two dash fifty four being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings. Of the regular council meeting held November ninth, two thousand and twenty two be passed and enacted. All those will allow you to call the vote there.
All those. Thank you, council. And the next is uh moved by Council Maine. Second by Council Post, that this regular media council adjourn uh seven oh six P M. All those in favor. Thank you, council. That carries with that. Thank you for all your support. Thank you to staff for all their support. Best wishes to the new council and uh. As I said, is there what Edward Merle said when he was in the blitz? Good night and good luck along here.
Thank you very much. Good night and morning.